When the Board of Administrators make their way to the desks, it is time for the regular meeting of the Board of Education and the 2017-18 Public Hearing on the 2016-17 Hearing on the 2017-18 Budget. Shall we have a little call, please? Mrs. Pampu.
Yes.
Mr. Garmen.
Here.
Dr. Lowe is away on business. Mrs. Mangano.
Here.
Mrs. Mallon. Is anybody here for Mrs. Mallon? I believe she's on her way.
Sure, it's that she's here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Moretti.
Present.
Mr. Bonjvani.
Present.
Mr. O'Brien.
Here.
A quorum is present. Shall we rise to the smooth flag? And you said remain standing in this very equivalent presentation of the National Anthem.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done, ladies. Thank you. Ladies and please stay by the desks. We have some certificates for you. Mr. Garmen and Mr. Miller, please join as the...
We'd like to thank you for coming out and leading us to the National Anthem tonight. We had a slight mix-up in who was coming, so we ended up with an improvised jam of the National Anthem between dribbling and... And you're very... Thank you very much. So, Sam, Kaylee Hassett. Here is never. I can't get my folder because I didn't have a chance to print out your... This means I gotta come to you tomorrow and give you your certificate, okay?
That's me by the President as read by the Secretary. Advocate notices this meeting as required by Chapter 231, Public Ball 1975, were distributed by the Secretary on April 26, 2017. It is now time for student recognitions. We will begin with the Board President Superintendent's remarks regarding those recognitions. Sir?
Thank you. As is my practice, I will turn it over to our superintendent to talk about our wonderful students and their achievement. And you, when we do recognize them, I will ask Mr. Pampu and Ms. Mangano to join you. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our May Board Meeting. Each year, both our middle schools go through a process, that is a pretty extensive process, to select a student achiever for each of their academic teams. And then they, from that, they actually select an overall student achiever for the entire school. And it is really an exciting honor for our gosters to be recognized. They play a major role in the graduation ceremony. And some of the students throughout the years have been amazing individuals who have gone on to such excellent accomplishments in high school and beyond. At this time, I believe Middle School South will be going first, so I'll ask Dr. Hennig... I'll ask Dr. Hennig to come up to the podium, which is not there any longer. And we can return that, and of course, I believe it was Ms. Mangano and Mr. Pampu joining Dr. Hennig in the recognition of his Middle School South student achievers.
I'd like to thank Mr. Rizzolo because I had a script and he stole most of it. But you know, what he said is, we have picked some outstanding individuals over the years. And what they do is they encompass everything that is good about middle school, from high academic achievement to what they bring on sports fields, TSA, through the music. They are just very well-rounded students. This year, we were very lucky to pick three people. One of them was unable to attend tonight. Olivia Morte is one of our student achievers of the team. We also have Casey Russo. Casey, will you come up? And our overall student achiever of the year is James Connect. James.
Good day.
Congratulations.
Everyone good?
Wait, wait.
I know we need to speed around.
Can we get one up here?
Thank you very much.
Sure. I said, "No, Mr. Garmen." Thank you.
Congratulations to our Middle School South student achievers. At this time, I'll ask Mr. Farley to join Ms. Mangano and Mr. Pampu for recognition of our Middle School North student achievers. Mr. Fiore will be assisting.
Thank you. I also want to take a moment to thank the Board of Education and Mr. Rizzola for recognizing the Middle School student achievers. It's a pleasure to work for a board that supports our school and our students. And it's a particular pleasure to work for Mr. Rizzola, who is a relentless focus on student achievement and always putting children first. And we do appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, for our student achievers for Middle School North. It's always a pleasure recognizing students. We have four student achievers here at Howard Middle School North, and they're all with us tonight. So, thank you for coming out. First, we have a student who's... that their teacher described as always pleasant and cooperative, willing to help her classmates at any time, earns tremendous grades, does her best in school and in the community. And Coltsneck High School is fortunate that Ashley Enzavino will be joining them in September. Teammate for student achiever, Ashen Enzavino. Okay, for teammate one, we have a student who's well-rounded, as all these students who are being recognized are. She's overcome many obstacles. She's extremely determined and hardworking, active as a peer leader, soccer team member, cheerleader, acting. She contributes in the community. And I know she'll find success in high school and beyond, and that is Katrina Kattazo. Teammate one. Our next student is from teammate two. Exceptionally polite young lady, leaves every class with a smile, stands out among her peers for her pride in her work, conscientious, dedicated, always doing her very best. She takes the initiative to get things done, and it's a pleasure to have her here at Howard Middle School North. I just found out she's going to Point Five in September, so good luck over there. We hope regional district will miss you. But our eighteenth student achiever is Mackenzie Smith. Congratulations. And finally, from teammate three, we do have our overall student achiever. This is the teammate three student achiever and also our overall student achiever. All of these students at both South and North will play a major part in our Middle School graduation ceremony. They'll be reading the names of their students and leading their classes in and up on the stage. So, that's quite an honor. Our overall student achiever, proper young lady, personable, smart, energetic. Basically, the teachers indicate that they can put her in charge of a group and they know it will get done. She goes out of her way to make sure her peers feel included, positive. She has tremendous grades, and I know she'll do well over at Howard High School. And our overall student achiever for teammate three is Stephanie Gale. Congratulations, Stephanie.
I believe that concludes our... Yeah, that concludes the recognitions this evening. It is now time for the budget hearing. Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Sansec, before we open up the budget hearing, I'd like to offer some remarks of what we're doing here tonight. With the Board's pleasure, over the years, this Board has faced numerous challenges. The most memorable recent one being, I think, the 2009 period, Mr. Sansec, when we experienced a significant contraction in the economy, followed by, probably, a year by a significant decline in our state aid, and it was over $6 million. In response to that crisis, we had to make significant cuts to the budget and services that we provided. Always maintaining what we could do to provide excellent education, we were faced by a tremendous economic reality, significantly reduced state funding. Over the years, the Board has engaged in a strategic planning process, which was focused on critically planning for student achievement, working to restore the services that were lost during the recession. Not only restoring them, but I believe, Mr. Sansec, it has actually increased and enhanced the level of services that we provided prior to the crisis.
Absolutely.
Okay. So, everything that we do here, this is... To look at this budget in isolation is to miss the big picture. We have a five-year strategic plan, and each budget is designed for that strategic plan with a long-term focus. Each year, the Board engages the administration in extensive dialogue through our retreats on what is important, what is our critical mission, and what they need. And we ask them to create a needs-based budget. And what I mean by that is that there is a process of separating needs from wants. And everyone out there is familiar with what that means because we all do it at home. We take a look at what we can afford and what we need, and we focus on that first. And then we also evaluate what once... And occasionally, sometimes, once become needs over time. This is evidenced by the fact that, over the years, we felt the need to continually enhance our professional development, as well as engage in a significant technology upgrade to bring one-to-one computing and 21st century technology into our classrooms. The other challenges this Board has faced over the years has been the threat of the rising cost of healthcare, which left unabated would have served to send millions and millions of dollars each year to insurance companies out of the coffers of the taxpayer into the insurance companies and not being spent on anything even closer to the education. So, one of the great successes that this Board and our staff have done, have achieved over the last several years, has been to collaborate in terms of restructuring our salary value to make it more sustainable, going from 13 steps to over 22 steps. That gives us a significantly better and more sustainable salary value structure for our personnel. And the other aspect that was, again, a tremendous success, has been the recent collaboration between our staff and the Board, where we jointly did due diligence on healthcare and came to a successful agreement, which allowed us to save an estimated $25 million over the next decade in healthcare payments that would have been paid to an insurance company. Instead, that significant cost avoidance has allowed us to save under 2% in our budget this year. Otherwise, we would have been hard-pressed to restrain the cost of healthcare, which had been going up. Mr. Sansec, what's the average in the state for healthcare cost increases?
About 12.
12, and ours?
6.
6, exactly. So, the significant difference between what we have achieved there is dollars saved for the taxpayer and able to reserve and marshal that to fund education. We've also, as a Board, you know, in addition to controlling benefit costs and salaries, we have built a team approach that is, I believe, unrivaled among any other district. The strong level of trust between the Boards and the administration enables us to go to them, work with them, ask them to make the tough choices, and they have done so. In years past, they've come to us, and we have confidence that each year, when we go to them and ask them to find the costs, they have done it and made a tremendous effort in doing so. Led our finance committee, which is, by the way, consists of three Board members and three citizen members from the community, sits and works with the administration to evaluate each aspect of our operational budget and they look for savings wherever they can. So, I know that each of the finance committee members has worked very hard this year. I commend the finance chair and his team for their due diligence in terms of working to reduce, wherever possible, the cost of education. But at the same time, remembering that our main mission is to provide a quality education focusing on student achievement, and in there, we have succeeded. So, we have the ability, through a needs-based budgeting process, to seek to be flat when we can. We have reduced it in the past. In several budget cycles, we have been flat, and I think at least one, we reduced levy by over $1 million.
Yes, sir.
So, it doesn't just go straight up with this district. We do work very hard to reduce costs whenever possible. But we have to be cognizant of the fact that we also need to fund education in a way that allows our district to remain as one of the best providers of education in the county, recognized by others for quality of programs, and serving as a magnet for families looking for a quality education for their children and a great community to settle. And that is a critical aspect. So, when we look at what we saw tonight, our student achievers and the talented young people that came out to perform for us, that's just an example of some of the work that we've been able to accomplish, working with our staff. We're committed to professional development. We're committed to being the best, and we are. We have succeeded, and we are recognized for that. However, we also recognize that the budgets need to be under control. And when you look at it, there's a lot of times we hear talk about how we're 70 to 75% of the budget. The reality is that the overall levy is about 50% of the budget. That's down from 54% several years ago. We've been steadily reducing it as a share of the overall cost. We have a dual mission, thorough and efficient. The first being thorough. We need to focus on the quality of education. The second being efficient. We have been efficient. We continue to be efficient. The... I also understand a lot of folks look at us to sharpen the pencil. Well, that process starts back, I think... When do we start our budget process, Mr. Sansec?
In earnest, we start in February. The administrative team starts in September for the following year.
Exactly. And each finance committee meeting is publicized, and I believe, both myself and my vice president have been on the record numerous times asking people to come out and attend through both finance, any other committee meeting, as well as community interaction. We have had the benefit of talking with many members of the community who have come out to those meetings and shared their thoughts and ideas with us. And wherever possible, we're open to constructive ideas on how to control costs. And wherever those cost savings can be achieved, we have instructed our administration, and oftentimes, our administration comes to us and gives us the ideas that they think are important, that can impact both controlling costs, but at the same time, not diminishing quality of our education. So, when you look at our budget, it is a budget that has been forged not from a single meeting, but over the last five years, we have been engaged in the process of strategic planning, aligning each budget as part of a step towards a greater goal. That greater goal being to continue to control costs, but at the same time, advance the most critical mission, which is preparing the next generation of our citizens to be the best they can be. Focus on individual student achievement. We've heard talk from our superintendent about the changes we made in terms of personalized education, which is, I believe, one of the most exciting aspects of the work we're doing here as a district. It's really important to understand, too, that when you are a Board member, we take a look at the... One of my favorite things is the 10,000-foot view. We want to look at the budget not simply on each individual line item, but look at the top line. What has been the actual growth? And we, this year, are coming in at, you know, 1.83% on the general levy, much less than what we're allowed. What's the total that we're allowed?
We would have been allowed by the law almost 4. We are about $1,000,500, and I do have that one slide in my presentation.
And I don't want to steal that. But it's important for this community to recognize something, too. We have retired, unutilized, over $12 million of taxing authority that was given to some of the CAP, but which we declined to take because we recognized that our responsibility to the community demanded that we control costs wherever possible. So, that duality where we're working very hard to control costs, but at the same time, working very hard to support our staff and give them the resources that they need to continue to achieve excellence in the classroom for our children, is a line we take very, very seriously. And as a Board that seeks community input, more, I think, than any other Board in this county, probably in the state, we invite each citizen member to come to every public meeting. We ask that three members be nominated from the public to come in and work with us side by side. And as the budgets unfold as part of that long-term process, every single member of the community can come forward and give us their best ideas on how you can achieve that objective of controlling costs and also providing excellence. So, with that as the backdrop, I'd like to turn it over to you, Mr. Sansec, to commence our meeting. And I thank everyone here for their attendance, and we look forward to hearing from you. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. O'Brien. I feel Dr. Hennig's position with losing his lines because, Mr. O'Brien, and I'm proud to say that we are on the same page on so many things because he stated a lot of things that I'm going to point out this evening. I'd also be remiss if I didn't, on behalf of the entire administrative team, thank the Board in general, but in specific, the finance committee, Mr. Miller, Mr. Garmen, and Mr. Moretti from the Board, and Ms. Long, Mr. Clark, and Ms. Rosenberg, who I think I saw here tonight, thank you for your service. It is a long and arduous task, and we do take it very seriously. And I'm proud to partner with all of you to get to this point. As Mr. O'Brien said, we have had committee meetings. We've gone over a number of different line items and overall impact on the budget. The presentation this evening is more of that, I believe, as Mr. O'Brien did say, that is one of his lines of 10,000-foot view, the way the Board needs to see it and the way that the community deserves to see it. So, this is the presentation for the 2017-2018 budget. It is a collaborative document, as Mr. O'Brien pointed out. It's also a representation of the district's goals and educational policies in the financial perspective, because everything is, the dollars lead to the student success. And we saw some of that success here this evening with inspiring young people. Even though we are... The return on investment, if you will, if we look at it in a business discussion, return on investment is the high achievement of our students, the honors and awards that we give and that they get statewide. When they go to a DSN competition, they outperform many, many other districts. As a district, we're recognized for our model programs. And we're on state panels, and we receive recognition for our work, and they model our work in other districts. We can't lose sight, however, of the fact that there is still a business component to this. And that is where my charge is. We provide more services to more of our citizens than any other organization in this township. Mr. O'Brien alluded to the fact there's been a lot of discussion what percentage of the tax bill we are, how many cents out of every dollar, come to our services. And I believe that needs to be examined in light of the fact that we are the major provider. We serve more meals a day than all the restaurants in Hallow combined. We transport more students, 6,000 students, to and from school every day. That's more miles, more road miles, wherever you want to do it, than any other transportation organization in the municipality. We care for more minors for more hours than any combination of the institutions. We're the largest employer in Hallow. Many of your neighbors and friends are employees of this fine district, doing the fine work that Mr. Rizzola and Mr. O'Brien pointed to earlier. More of them are residents and just overall more employees. So, although the backdrop of the fine students here tonight and everything is what our return on investment is, but we still have to recognize that we have to operate. Overview tonight, what I hope to show you is the priorities that the committee envisioned while we built this budget, the accomplishments of this budget, the challenges that we did face, and at the end, some assessment of the results. First, the priorities. Obviously, support and improvement of student achievement. We are always looking to improve. We are always looking to serve our students better and make them better prepared to move on, even if it's the point where we still... We'll miss them all. Provide long-term fiscal stability, and that's something Mr. O'Brien alluded to. We don't look at a one-year basis. We look at the overall stability. And I believe you'll see in the slides to come that over the last nine years, we've delivered that in spades. The way we do that is maintain a stabilized tax levy. Maintain... Maintenance of the critical infrastructure. You can allow your stay-at-your-plant to deteriorate. It will not be well in the future. We take it very seriously. This Board has seen the wisdom in having maintenance reserves so that we don't have deferred maintenance, so that we're not leaving our critical infrastructure in jeopardy and costing more in the future. We also recognize that this is a community-supported budget. We recognize that all of you are investors in this success. And then we demonstrate fiscal prudency, and we do that every day. The administration as a whole, myself and my staff, charged with the business functions. Every day, we're watching out for every dollar. The accomplishments of this budget, we maintain all the parameters, and we fully implement all the new curricula. And that was something Mr. Preston came to the committee. He explained what we were doing. The committee was very interested in ensuring that we were not half-sticking, that we were not second-guessing or shortchanging our students. He also explained something, which I'll get to on another slide in the future, too, of how great it is that our one-to-one technology is allowing for student-based content and not having to buy as many textbooks. We accommodate all the state mandates. Of course, you know, there are some things the state makes us do we would rather not do. There's things the federal government makes us do that we believe we could do better if it wasn't for their mandates. But we don't. better if it wasn't for the mandates, but we don't have a choice, and we do accommodate all of those mandates. And this is to mention, we continue to support and leverage our one-to-one environment. That environment is allowing us to avoid a probably $200,000 purchase of social studies books, and for a very small investment, we'll be creating our own content on those devices that the students are excelling on. So the one-to-one is paying off. The open-source content is something that remains current. If you think about it, when you buy a social studies textbook, the thing that gets delivered, it's outdated. This world is changing so rapidly that having open-source one-to-one content will just keep everything more current and at a much reduced cost. To accomplish all this, our team has to be the best athletes, the best mental athletes they can be. We invest heavily in professional development and maintain their support and their evaluations to ensure that they are at that cutting edge. And then, of course, we expand support of the student achievement initiatives, streamline professional development to make sure it's working, and enhance our staff preparation. We continue always, every day, on administrative efficiencies. We try to find that six sigma or that lean mentality in all the operational sites to make sure that we're preserving every dollar possible for the classroom. I'm getting a little bit of feedback, I apologize. The challenges we face, every year we face this challenge, unfunded government mandates. They mandate things, and it either stays flat or goes down. The deferred capital needs, we have a million, 400,000 square feet of building that we maintain on an annual basis. That is a huge plan. And those deferred capital needs can fight you if you don't stay with it. Thank you to the buildings and grounds department, they do an excellent job. Continued security initiatives to protect students and staff. You can never be too sure. We don't have a fire every day, but we maintain the fire extinguishers in the same mode. We make sure that our students and staff can come to work, come to work, and to school, and be confident that we have their best interests at heart. We're facing a fairly new process in the next-gen science standards. We are prepared. Those of you who are lucky enough to see Ms. Giannellis present at a prior board meeting know that we are taking it seriously and on the cutting edge. Account classification, and this one was kind of difficult for me to find the words for. The state, in its infinite wisdom, changes where we have to account for money on an annual basis. So if you look at any of the lines in the handout this evening, or what the board has, you may see some pluses and minuses that look shocking. You may see a plus 44% or a minus 65%, but if you look at the total function, you'll see that they are all within reason, and ultimately, as Mr. O'Brien said, for us to have a 6% or 5.9, actually, I rounded up, I should have said 5.9, cost on our second-largest expense and an almost 3% cost on our largest expense, and still be able to put a budget on the table at 1.83% on the levy, 1.7% on the spending, obviously, those line items have an explanation somewhere else in the budget. So explaining that was a challenge. There's one outstanding issue, and it was brought up at one of the prior meetings. Those of you who had nothing else to do on February 28th, you might have watched our governor give his budget address. And in that address, he indicated that state aid to schools would be at certain levels, and we would all get our state aid notices by statute two days later. And then, at the end of his address, he threw up a big caution flag. And he said that he challenged the legislature to come up with a different plan within the next 100 days. Well, February 28th plus 100 days is June 8th. So they are still working and might, and I caution, I have no information, but I say might, be different. Many of the plans that they're talking about would actually increase our state aid, because as Mr. O'Brien said, they've knocked this down over the years. But there may be a new plan. One of the struggles is that we are mandated to certify our taxes by May 12th, obviously before the June 8th date. So in accordance with the direction from the Department of Ed and from our county office, we are going forward with the state aid notice that we have. There may be good news on June 8th, or there could possibly be bad news on June 8th, but I just want to make sure everybody's aware that the legislators are still working on this. One thing that we're proud of every year, the county issues a regional limit on administrative cost per pupil. It's a calculation that the State Department of Ed does. Our allowable per pupil would be $2,040. This budget delivers $1,818 on that cost-per-pupil formula that the state runs. That's a million, 300,000 below what the threshold the state set for us would be, and we're very proud of that. As Mr. O'Brien pointed out, we have a multi-year strategy. We do not look at the budget in one year. There are very few of us plan our financial house in a one-year tranche, so we do not look at that either. One of the examples of that is the maintenance reserve to allow us to maintain our buildings at a high level without having any impact on the taxes. That maintenance reserve, although it's in a spending plan, it is not taxation. So we are using that three-to-five-year, or even multi-year, beyond five-year basis to make that happen for good tax stability. Some of the methodologies to maintain that stability, we continually monitor our debt. We refinance, we have refinanced over the years, and we refinance any debt as the interest rate picture prevails. Increase energy conservation, we are constantly looking for better ways to utilize the electricity and gas, natural gas that we use. We're in the process of a very large ESIP program, which should dramatically reduce that, and also make our buildings better, more comfortable, and better on the environment. So that is a win-win-win situation. We're in the middle of that right now, it's going to be a large project. Ms. Marilyn, her committee is shepherding that through in operations, and we'll have more information on that in the very near future. Expand shared services. We have a very robust list of shared services that we do with our municipal partners, with other districts, with Farmingdale. And I'm excited to say that in the next couple months, I hope to be announcing some more shared services with other districts that will benefit both districts and be a revenue source for us. We try to maximize our assets for revenue. Continue streamlining of operational functions. They tease me a little bit, because I enjoy looking for those keys where we can do it. Mr. Isol gets tired of me running in with ideas. Enhance the purchasing strategy. We implemented a central purchasing that has already saved over $1 million over the last three years. The folks in my office, Ms. DePasquale and her team, constantly search for the better price. There are ways to purchase that are approved, but not necessarily the most efficient. We look for the approved, most efficient, and they are paying huge dividends. This proposed budget, $113 million. The state and federal program portion, and for those of you who remember from before, that's the Title Funds, Title I, Title II, A, and those, they're basically pass-throughs. That's the money the federal government sends us with specific earmarks on it. And then our debt service, which is basically the mortgage. That is the referendum bonded debt that we have to make the payments on, and that is fixed, and that is outside of anybody's control, unless we refinance, of course. It is a policy-driven core budget. As such, this is a pie chart demonstrating that the majority of it is salaries and benefits. The operational and instructional costs are the smaller portion. That's where we have to make our changes, that's where we have to make our savings, and we do quite well at it. I'm proud to say, and Mr. O'Brien was proud to say it for me, saying it's something that we've worked very closely on, and I appreciate that. The benefits are way down, the health is the largest share, as you can see, the dental is the smallest share. Prescription is one we're watching right now. Prescription has been, and you've probably seen it in the news, some new drugs, it's a wonderful thing that the new drugs are out there, but they come at a high cost. And we are monitoring that right now, and we're finding ways, we're looking at other methods to try to control that a little bit more, even though we are controlling it well, as Mr. O'Brien said. Our sources of revenue, you can see here, the largest share of which is the tax levy. And then the second largest is the state aid, which we've discussed, and I have a few more slides on it. The other miscellaneous, and the reserves, as I discussed, the maintenance reserve and other reserves, and we have some miscellaneous income. What does that mean to the tax picture? And that's probably everybody's biggest question. The 2016 levy was 71 million. We could have adjusted it up by 2% and have a health benefit adjustment, and there is a bank cap on the table for 578,000. That would have allowed an allowable cap of 73,983, without a vote, without anything else, just the same as the one I'm putting on the table this evening, or we're putting on the table this evening, at 1.83. It could be a million five higher and still be within the law that people refer to as the 2% law. This budget, however, is only up a million three, and that represents a 1.83 increase in the tax levy. Mr. O'Brien alluded to this, this is the chart, I'm not sure if you can see it, and he said $12 million, that was the number from last year. As of this budget, if it is approved this evening, this board will have left $14 million of taxing authority on the table and not used it, and shows that there's strength that we appreciate, the partnership that we have, the trust that we know we can do that, and we're able to avoid using that taxing authority. And that is just in actual, real dollars from year to year. If you were to envision using everything and not even what we could have used, and using everything, it would have compounded to over $30 million in taxation. So I appreciate being a partner with this board and administration to show that restraint for all of you. Looking at the seven-year tax levy, I think it's very important to note that we have a combined average increase with debt service of under 1.5% on an average basis, and without debt service, 1.7. That shows that on an average basis, we are still below that 2%, even though there were times when we had to take a little more. You will see that there's the minus there, at one time, we went down 1.42%, we went down over a million dollars, as Mr. O'Brien alluded to. How do we do it? This is becoming repetitious. Operational efficiency, shared service, our purchasing practices, claims auditing. We look at, we are self-insured for our health, and we look at every claim that's over a certain level that comes to the office, and we check for accuracy and to make sure it's not double-billed, and we file charges on our partner with Horizon on anything that seems out of the ordinary, and pay dividends as well. This state aid, as was alluded to earlier, in 2009 was 36 million. In 2010, we were cut $6 million during that fiscal cliff, as some referred to it, and our state aid went down to 30,600. At this point, this year, we're slightly down from last year, $600, basically flat. But you see that we're still only at 33 million, only halfway back from where we were in 2009. And although that money comes from taxpayers also, in balance, that means that more of the money has to come from the local real estate taxpayers. And we made cuts to make sure we didn't have to do that. This shows the difference between last year and this year, you see that minor $600 difference at the bottom. The tax levy, and I put this up here just to say that, I talk about the general fund tax levy primarily, that's that $72 million number. We also have the debt service, which is that mortgage payment, and that has to be raised as well. So when we get ready to calculate the taxes, well, we don't, when the township uses our information to get ready to calculate your taxes, they work taxes on a calendar year. We have a budget on a fiscal year, July 1st to June 3rd. So when they are calculating the tax rate, they are actually taking the second half of the budget we're living in today, and the first half of the budget we're proposing, and they use that, those numbers, to calculate the portion to be raised for local taxation. So sometimes if you see numbers that don't quite jive, if the town quoting a tax levy, they're quoting the calendar year, we're quoting the fiscal year. So this is the calculated tax rate based on the presentation, the budget being presented this evening. That calculation would yield a reduction in the tax rate of 2.3 cents. However, good news, I think, the ratable base in Hound is expanding because all of your real estate value, by virtue of good times, is increasing in value. The town ratable is up. The average house last year of 318,000, that same house, not a different house, not a more expensive house, not a house with improvements, but that same house is now valued at 332,000. So even though the tax rate went down, the cash taxes on that average house is going up about $95 per year, or about $8 per month. The good news is that your real estate value is going up significantly more than that, and I would suggest that the value of our community, the value of our schools, is a big part of why our real estate values stay at the level they do. I'm not sure this is showing up. This is a study, again, from that 2009 year, that's the year we use as kind of the bellwether, because that's when the new law came in. In the years from 2009 to this proposed budget, the budget has only grown at a growth rate of 1.528%. I suggest that that is below the cumulative CPI, cost of living, and everything else. The levy, because revenue fell off from the state, but the levy went up at 1.608%, slightly more than that, still significantly below the amount of increase in CPI and cost of living. And again, I'm very proud of being a part of that, along with this board and administration. There were, as we were preparing the budget, there were some questions presented, either to the finance committee or to administration, so I have some statistical assessment in here to show the relative comparison. This first one is from 2000 to 2016. This is a comparison of the four big taxing authorities that entered into your tax bill. The top line, as we've discussed, is the local schools. Yes, it is a bigger piece, but you can see that over the time period that we're looking at, it came continuously down. The other three lines are, the blue, I believe it is, is the county, and you can see the trend there. The yellow is the regional schools, that's Freehold Regional, that's where we send our children for high school. You can see that that went up a little, and then you're made flat. I'm not doing good with this clicker, I apologize. And then the red line is the municipal, and you can see that in 2000, we represented 55 cents on the dollar of the tax dollars you were spending. I'm proud to say that in 2016, we have that down to 50, and I think when all the numbers are in, it will be under 50 cents for the 2017 taxes. Whereas the regional increased slightly from 16% to 18%, and the municipality increased from 9 to 17.8. Another way of looking at that, because that does kind of skew it, it kind of has us way up there, even though we're making a continued positive process, and remember that we still are the biggest employer, the biggest institution in the town. Here's another way to look at it, this is a comparison of the rate of growth. This is just a percentage increase between us and our municipal taxing brothers. And you see that the red lines are there, and ours are the orange, and you can see the stability. Our public schools, we are always proud to say, great students, great staff, and great community, but as always, we have great expectations, both to the students, for the administration, and for ourselves. That concludes tonight's presentation for me. Mr. O'Brien, questions from the board?
Thank you, Mr. Sanzak. I would like to open it up to the board now. Each board member has the opportunity to view the budget and go to administration with any questions, but I'd like to turn it over now to any, either questions or comments on the, starting off on the right, anyone? Yes, Mr. Sanzak.
There's one item about the school security costs for the resource officers. We haven't officially voted on that yet. I know, I'm sure we have to budget for it in case, but if perhaps that didn't happen, what happens to that a lot of money?
Well, right now, that's in negotiations between the two parties, so I can't say a lot about that, but at safety, and Mr. Moretti, if you don't mind? a lot about that, but at safety, and Mr. Moretti, if you don't mind, steal your committee brief, if that's okay. We did discuss, you know, the benefits of having them, but also the potential if they weren't and Mr. Adeline is there and he also presented some options to doing other things. There's some physical security things that he has recommended, so we might consider redeploying that or it might go to surplus and be tax relief in the next budget. All those things are possibilities that I would present to the board at that time.
Okay. One other question I noticed was that cafeteria salaries, there's nothing to worry about. Do you mind reading it?
If you look, that's been the same over the years, that's a line that we have to put in there, but they get paid out of what's called Fund 60. That's an enterprise fund, they generate their own money because they're selling lunches. They run kind of like a little McDonald's, so that's not in this budget, they just run that and we, well, we pay for the electric in the cafeteria and things like that, that's in there, but that does not signify any change at all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Brien. Anyone else on this side of the table? Yes.
I have a question, the chair of finance, but I do want to thank the committee for their hard work doing the budget. Honestly, I wish more residents came out to our finance committee meeting and shared their comments with us during the actual process of us developing this budget, so we could have got more feedback and do equipment together. Like Mr. O'Brien said, we always announce when those finance committee meetings were and at the last board meeting, I had mentioned that it was last Wednesday and I had asked the committee to come out and I think I had one committee member come out besides one committee. So in the future, I really do encourage the community to come out to that finance committee meeting because honestly, we don't know what cuts to make without, you know, your suggestion and we get a lot of our feedback from administration, but we want to give it, the community has to say also, and that's really the opportunity for the community to come out and share with the finance committee, you'll feel the sort of budget as we develop it.
Thank you, Ms. O'Brien. Vande Willems?
Year after year, the fact that there's a difference in terms of how things are reported between the fiscal and the annual, between how we report. Ted has sort of questions over the reporting and the way it looks year after year. Do you ever anticipate a time where that's going to change in line up to each other?
I do not. The fiscal works better for a school district if you think about starting in July with your budget and the kids coming back in September. If we were changing budgets between December and January, it could be a disruptive factor. Although maybe my slide looks a little busy, it's simply, it's simple on the accounting side, but it does create a reporting difficulty and, you know, I try to show how it works so that people have a better understanding, but I don't believe there's any legislative initiative right now for that and I think, I think the fiscal works better for a school district and that's probably why it is we're making.
Thank you. Anything further? Okay, thank you, Mr. Sanasek for that presentation and...
We need to open the public hearing.
Absolutely. Get back to your seat or if you want to stay up.
I can answer in case I need to record a slide.
Unlike our normal board meetings, this is a public hearing and it is interactive, right, Mr. Sanasek?
Yes.
So we can ask your questions, so certainly, this will be an opportunity for you and any member of the administrative team to address any questions from the public about our budget and we look forward to it. So with that. What do we, I will open it up?
Open, yes.
And the floor is open.
Other comments at this time?
Any comments or questions from the public, we'd be happy to entertain them. Oh, by the way, let me just set a couple of the ground rules, rules of engagement. I'm not sure how many folks are going to be coming down to speak tonight, but we've allotted 45 minutes for this portion.
Sure.
And each individual will be limited to three minutes. I will be the timekeeper, I assume that as we get closer to the close of the three minutes, just look to me, I will give you a sign that your time is coming to completion. So thank you very much. Good evening, Ms. Dixiel.
I may remind you, Mr. O'Brien, it's a public, open public hearing, there should not be a time restraint.
That is our practice, ma'am.
I'm sorry to disagree with you. Okay, well, I do agree that you have the absolute best schools, the best education and the kids get the best of everything. I have to tell you, I read, I read the numbers and oh, by the way, I went to the student council last night, the county council, kids did a great job. They opened it to the public and I got up there and I requested, I made a citizen's motion from the floor that I requested that that governing body that was there last night, they may be kids, but they need to taste the reality. That, that, by the school board, governing body, write a note to this Board of Education telling you that you're out of control. 73% of our property taxes don't give. The education is second to none, the schools are second to none, has nothing to do with the property taxes that we get saddled with and have to pay and the seniors are the worst. We suffer the worst and I don't want to hear from, from a financial guy, Mr. Sanz, ah, you're all on tax freezes, it doesn't make a difference. Yeah, shut up, guys. We have to pay the taxes. I don't care if you're on a tax freeze or not, you have to pay it. So I read the numbers. 2015, 16, our county school district Board of Education, 1,399.29. The regional was fine, over 4.58. The school taxes alone in 2015, 16 were 1,903.87. The rest, the rest is the county, 334 dollars, the municipal, 464, the library, 22, the county health, 24, municipal, 23, and the fire, 61, for 930. The 2015, 16 breakdown on our taxes is the school board, 1,903, plus everything else is 930, so our taxes were 2834. 2017, school district, 1,533.39. The regional, 560, so it's now up to 2,009.369. That's our school taxes. You people have a lot of it, you really do. The rest of everything else on the budget is 1,000 dollars. Okay, there is no reason why between 2017 and 2016 that we have to pay 1,399 dollars just in the district, forget about the regional, as 1,533 dollars. I have to agree with you, you've got the best education, the best of everything, you need to get real, you need to think of the welfare and safety of the citizens of this town when you're strapping with taxes we can't pay and you're driving us out. We have, I, I represent, I am the elected county committee woman from the villagers. I represent a thousand seniors and I can tell you that I have seniors in the villages that can't pay something, that are behind in their duties, that are in arrears, they got a hell of a, an arrears problem, okay? Because you people are saddling the hell out of us. We have to pay yelp, we have to eat, we have to put roof up our heads. Most of us are sick, I can tell you I am, you know, for how many years I've been sick, between cancer and tumors and every other thing, they keep trying to kill you, but I'm trying not to let them.
I'm very glad about that too.
Well, I gotta keep fighting you people, I gotta keep fighting the hell out of you.
Absolutely.
So I have to try not to let them kill me. But I, I have to tell you, I'm ripping, there's no reason, I said, I said I might get your paper and I read the numbers.
Ms. Dixiel, I'm going to extend you a few minutes more time and the rest of the crowd agrees, I think I'm happy to do so, but I do have respect to the others, ask that we complete it in the next...
Okay, thank you. And as I, I did mention to you that I went to the school board last night and I understand, at the end of the meeting, I sat in the back of, I, after that, I just quietly went to the back and sat down and one young man from the governing body walked up to me and said, "Do you want me to write the resolution?" And I said, "Yes, I do and I expect to see you here at this Board of Education meeting tonight." So I know he's here. Yes, deputy mayor and the casual called me, yes, the kid wrote the resolution, I understand this strikes all the way, but I haven't seen it. And two parents walked up to me that were there after school, this, and said, "Mrs. Dixiel, you are not wrong, you're 100% right, they're driving us out of town." And I'm just me and my big mouth, my big mouth as usual, but you've got two parents of kids in this school, they're, they're driving us out, you're not wrong.
Thank you, Mrs. Dixiel. And by the way, I'm very proud of our students and they've been...
You should be very proud of them.
I was told by the individuals who attend, including our superintendent and several members of our board, that they did a terrific job.
A fabulous job, you should all be very proud of them soon.
And I actually have a couple of emails from several students that I will be responding to at the earliest opportunity. Again, it's, I want to thank the township for their participation in that and I want to thank you for coming down and giving you a taste of what we experienced.
You know what, it's wonderful that they were there, it's wonderful that they had the student government day, but you know something, at the end of the meeting, they opened it to the pop-up, he's giving you the taste of reality. So, you want to face the real world, you want to be on the governing body, you're going to face the real world, especially with me.
Exactly.
So please, because of the taxes, we can't do this. That's all I'm asking you, get real, thank you.
I believe a question was raised, this is a point of accuracy, early in our presentation, we are already now at just under 50% on the general tax levy, not 70, but I do appreciate Mrs. Dixiel's passion, she's been a longstanding member of the community, coming to each board meeting and we're always glad to see her and we do value her input. And again, as I stated earlier, we're trying to walk that fine line between managing costs and also providing the best quality education. So thank you, Mrs. Dixiel, for your comments. Okay. With that, any further comments from the public? Yes, sir, please come up.
Adam Sehan, 22 East Mill, across the... I came to do the finance committee meeting last week as well, I heard Mr. Sanasek's presentation then and today. It was a very, very good presentation, thank you for all the information, but of course...
Thank you for attending the meeting.
Well, we are all interested as taxpayers, we have to come, otherwise we are going to hear into life, our taxes, they're going, going to go up again. And this year is going to go up. Your counterpart, the town council, didn't do as well as you did, they are increasing our revenues by over 4%. But of course, everything is not as pink as Mr. Sanasek was saying. You know, some of the reasons why the school budget, relatively speaking, did not go up significantly because in the last three years, number of students have been decreasing. In fact, as we shared the information before we do, within the last three years, not including this year, I don't know the statistics this year of course, so in the last three years, dollars per student increased by 21%, that's almost averaging 7%. And of course, again, something I shared with Mr. Sanasek last, last week, Marlborough, they have a school size similar to Howell, I believe they have 5,000 students, we have about 6,000, they were able to reduce their tax levy this year. We hope to see that in the future, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your points and by the way, sir, thank you for coming out to our finance meeting and I hope to see you and many of your peers come forward as we go forward with our next budget process. Just as a case in point, though, it's important to recognize that earlier it said that don't look at a budget simply as a series of line items, but overall, we grew at about 1.83% and it can sometimes be a little misleading to look at individual line items that may appear to be larger, but as a percentage, that doesn't reflect the actual growth in our, in our budget. Our budget has been under 2% and I do agree, if possible, this board would seek to be flat or reduced if that was not something that conflicted with our primary objective. We were able to reduce the budget by over a million dollars several years ago because we had been able to, we received additional state aid, but rather than spend that money, we returned it back to the taxpayer that year and hopefully as we go forward, we'll see operations in Trenton result in better opportunities for us to get perhaps a better school funding formula and other vehicles. And the encouraging part for our community to understand is that this board does not look at additional state aid simply as something that we need to give to the board and to the district to spend, but something that if we have an opportunity, as we did in the past, with extra state aid that was something we didn't need, we returned it to the community in tax relief. So if they are successful in Trenton in creating a more equitable school funding formula, this board has demonstrated its fiscal prudence and its commitment to tax relief when possible and if that were available to us, I believe as a board, we would have the ability and will, where appropriate, as long as it didn't conflict with our mission of enhancing education, to be able to provide actually. So I agree with you, sir, we will look for opportunities in the future and we certainly count on Trenton to come up with a better funding formula. So thank you. Yes, Ms. O'Brien?
Probably about two months ago, we had Assemblyman Marburg sitting right over here with us and we did express to him our concern with the school funding, that something needs to be done, we need to get an increase in state funding for the district to take the burden off the property taxes. We do have a very active advocacy group that's, Mr. Moretti, Mr. Vande Willems, myself, are on, that we will continue, we just had this conversation last week, increasing our reach to Assemblyman Marburg and Senator Singer to increase the state funding for the school. It's desperately needed, I presume in our slides tonight, in 2011, we got that dry supply, we're still not back to where we belong in school funding. So I encourage you, if you can, to contact our assembly and senators and really ask them and assist us in getting that school funding to the district, it will really help us in our property taxes.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. O'Brien, that's a good point. Ms. Dixiel? If you... No, no, Ms. Dixiel, if you'd like to, if you'd like to be recognized, certainly come up to the desk, but I believe someone else, ma'am, someone else?
One second, one second.
Okay, sure.
It adds to repeating a dead horse in Trenton, because isn't it true that the money goes to the advocacy? Doesn't matter that it's what you do, how you do it, upside down, inside out or backwards. Every, every legislator, I mean, you need your heart out to talk to them and what happens? They vote in Trenton and they give it to the advocacy and we all lose out. How do you fight that?
At the end of the day, ma'am, that's the fight that we have to fight because that's where we're going to advocate this.
Sorry, I think, I believe Mr. Miller referring to the inclusion, the inclusion of the entire situation when he speaks about advocacy and problems.
We believe that the money that's going to the so-called former advocacy districts should be really split between the other districts. They need to be funded, they need to have that whole formula and even under formula what we're doing where districts that are still are here now, that used to be advocates, those no longer fall in that category of getting that money, that money needs to go to districts that...
That's what your thought is, that Meredith Rochelle is so powerful that they want to judge you on that, that's your move.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name, my name's Deborah Tarby, I live at One West Bonachelli. And I certainly look forward to a day when I, when I get tax relief. Unfortunately, that's just not the environment right now and I want to tell you how I've become involved in the Community Interaction Committee and how incredibly impressed I am with this Board of Education, with the people who come out of it, with the... of it, with the administration, with all that's going on here. And I want to compliment you on that. And although I would love to see relief in my taxes, I want to thank you for all that you do for the children of this community.
Thank you, ma'am.
I was doing the last prior to that. Thank you very much, by the way. There has been quite a bit of play. Mrs. Dixiel is correct, it's been a long fight, but there's been a lot of articles recently, there's a lot of discussion at the legislature. So, if you want them to hear from you, now is the time. There are three articles, three different plans, all of which would be good for Howe. There's one that is being promoted by the Garden State Coalition of Schools that not only includes fair funding from the SFRA, which is the School Funding Reform Act, I know I use acronyms once in a while, but it also addresses pilot programs and the special aid costs. So it's a real good plan. It is getting played in Trenton, and I echo Mr. Miller's point that we should make our voices heard.
As a sidebar, not to the budget area perhaps, if we have an opportunity to bring our, if our Advocacy Committee invites our legislative leaders in to speak to the board again, let's make sure that we let the public know so that the public can come, sit here, and ask the questions, because I know our legislators will be open to that, and I know it will be a great opportunity for our community to come in and express what they think is important. And we, as a board, serving as advocates for the community, can then connect you with your legislators and give you an opportunity to speak to them. So, Mr. Moretti, if you have the opportunity to invite them to our next, to a future board meeting, let's make sure that we let the public know, and hopefully everyone that's here tonight will spread the word and let their fellow members and citizens come out and speak with our legislators about some of the issues that we're talking about here. Because that's where I think the real rubber is going to meet the road in terms of getting some relief. Thank you. Yes, yes.
The cost per student comes up frequently, and people do like to compare, "Well, here's what another town is doing, and here's the cost per student." And Mr. Sanisak, I doubt you have it in your pocket, although you have so many numbers available, but one thing when you look at cost per student, you also have to look at, not every child really costs the same. There are certain situations, especially if we're dealing with a special needs child, where the cost may be significantly higher, and because the funding program from the state does not necessarily allow for the funding that should come in those situations as was promised, when you take those two considerations, the cost per student, it really is often a, really, a big number. And maybe you could adjust that for a second?
Yes, the cost per pupil excludes some things, and there's a number of things, but one of the state aid programs caps the special aid costs as if our population was all 14.70% of special aid identified or classified students. Our classification is more in the high teens, and those extra costs on any of those students is a reason why our cost per pupil is higher than some that are closer to that average. It's a sliding scale, there's, you know, different levels of costs, but yes, absolutely, that goes into it as well as some of the other things in our district.
Thank you. I believe we have someone waiting to speak. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your passion.
Hi, my name is Loretta, and I live in De Caster. And it's my first time speaking. I didn't get these type of meetings, but all I keep hearing all night is, "We need money from the state, we need money from the taxpayers." I have worked in business and management all my life, and when we have budget issues, we have to make cuts. I've never heard, and I have not been to the meeting leading up to the budget, but I just, anybody ever discussed enrollment going down? Maybe raising the future students per class, cutting staff, cutting some of the upper echelon, letting some of the people pay a little bit more for their benefits? This is what we do in corporates, unfortunately.
Ma'am, I agree that there's a certain element of business sense that means you're going to end the enterprise, and as I illustrated earlier, we have already, working cooperatively with our staff and moving to a much more effective and efficient healthcare program, kept our costs significantly lower than our average. As a matter of fact, under 78, our employees are paying now to 30% of their healthcare premiums. And in addition to that, we have seen that makes, within cooperation with us in the last round of negotiation, they moved to a much higher deductible. Mr. Sanisak, that family deductible now is what?
$2,505,000.
Which is up from, what was it before?
$4,800.
$4,800 to $2,505,000. So, in lieu of your point, that's exactly right. What we have done together in-house as a district, working collaboratively with our staff, was to seek through collective bargaining opportunities to control costs, and we continue to seek those opportunities wherever we can. But the important thing to remember is that we did so in a manner that was also reflective of the fact that we value our staff, we respect them, we think their contributions are critical, and we look where we can to balance controlling costs, and they were very, very cooperative with us in the last round. We commend them for that. But it was also very important for us to provide the highest quality service healthcare to them, and we made sure that happened as well, so that, at the end of the day, we are looking at ways to control costs over the years. We see a decline in enrollment, recently we configured our school district, and I think our superintendent has something he'd like to add to that.
Yeah, you know, oftentimes, and I appreciate your comments, oftentimes we get the term, "We do this in business, we do that." Well, we're a private sector, we're not a private sector, we're a public sector entity, and our rules are very different. That's the first thing that people have to really swallow about is, we're not a business. We are, but we do hold ourselves accountable. Let me give you, for example, you've spoken about the declining enrollment, undeniable, it's factual. What we don't celebrate, but what we do, is through hard work and through attrition, experience, rather than just doing massive cuts, we have experienced, for example, the last two years, probably 40 less certified staff members in our district. When we do that math, that's probably more than 1,000 seats for students. So there's some correlation that it made perfect sense, and that's tough decision-making when we go through that process, but that's what we do, right? If we do a business, we also do that. In fact, when we went through the rest a few years ago, then President of the Association was very appreciative of the respectful manner in which it was being done. It was tough work, it was very difficult for our association, our, the unions on the property, but through collaboration and being fair and doing things through attrition, we were able to reduce staff dramatically without all the bells and whistles, without the hoof lot, but do the right thing for our bottom line, but yet maintain quality instruction in our classrooms and support for our staffs to be successful.
But we need to know more about that, because we never hear of it.
Well, that happens in a public meeting, with all due respect, and as you indicated, this was your first meeting, so it's done at the desk. You know, that's not, when someone loses their job, I'm not going to jump up and down and celebrate that, but I do what we have to, but we do what has to be done to be fair to our bottom line, fair to our staff, and to the unions on the property, as well as the students in the classroom. And it's a tough balancing act, as I'm sure you agree in your business.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
To go further, Mr. Miller's point, made the point about how hard the committee worked, and I appreciate, again, that you said you weren't at the finance meetings, but in February when we began, we had a budget on the table that would have been a 5.5% increase. We see 1.83 tonight. That's the work that the finance committee did. So, coupling that with the long-term, as Mr. Isola said, I think, although you're here tonight, that work is done, and it is done in public, and I would, again, invite everyone to come. The committee is where the real deal is done.
And I do appreciate your comments in public like that, because as a businessperson myself, you know, I work in the finance industry, financial planning, you know, coming in and sitting on a board as a volunteer, you know, there's things that are similar, but there's things that are very, very different as well, in terms of how you can run and operate a public entity like a school district versus sort of your private business. However, I have the greatest respect for our administrative team, that they also have in the past, either business recounting experience, practical world experience, and educational expertise, and they utilize that every day to focus on what's critical. And, you know, going back, it's, again, it's part of a long-term process. What we do here is very different than what you see in a lot of other places. We're not sitting here making decisions on the fly, we're making them deliberately over a period of years following the strategic planning process, and we seek input from the community on an ongoing basis. So, again, it's very encouraging to see a lot of you here tonight. I'm hopeful that when I appoint, or any future president appoints committee members, that some of you might become part of our team of partners in our citizen committee attendance, helping us wrestle some of these challenges. Because after all, as Mr. Miller alluded to earlier, we are very open to feedback, comments, and we love to be challenged by ideas that are constructive, helping us to achieve the objectives that all of us want, which is to provide the best quality education, but also be respectful to costs. So, you know, again, this is a good starting point. This budget year, I think, is a success because we've already seen a lot of folks coming out, and perhaps you're hearing things for the first time you haven't heard before. Our process, I think, is unique, and we're very proud of it, but it requires the partnership of the community to really make it work, so, thank you. Anyone else would like to come up and speak? Oh, we have two, two folks. Okay, good. Are we doing on time, Mr. Sanisak? Good?
We're about 35 minutes.
Perfect.
Hi, good evening. I'm Charlotte Sopriani, I'm from Fabi's, Director of De Caster. From what I'm hearing, it sounds like there's a lot of you that are as frustrated as we are with what's going on here, and apparently the money that's being allocated isn't being distributed fairly, if I can use that word. Since you are the committee, and you are the board, and you are really in a lot of, in control of where we can bring this forward, because we, as the citizens, really have our hands tied in a lot of ways that we don't know where to go from here. If you were to organize something and say, "This is what we're going to do, and we're going to go to Trenton, and this is the day, and we're going to do this," I'm certain that we can get a lot of these folks and a lot more to go with you and be wherever we need to be to let them know that we don't feel that this is fair to tax one district the way it is and continue to give, like you said, to some of the districts that are obviously doing a lot better now. So, I'm just putting that out there for, you know, clients.
I think I could speak for the board of the suggestion, and I think it's a great one. As a matter of fact, I believe it was within the last year or two that we actually formed an advocacy committee. I've asked Mr. Moretti to chair it. Mr. Bonjibani, who is an experienced boardsman with many years of experience both with National and New Jersey School Board, as well as Mr. Miller, who is our President of the Monmouth County School Board Association. We, you know, we asked them to serve as our representatives and advocates for the community. So, what I would recommend is that you stay in touch with our committee through administration, and if you and others like you can help, we'll hold meetings of the advocacy committee. We will be happy to be your voice to our legislators regarding areas that we have a saying, because that's one of our responsibilities and one of the things that we set up the committee for in the first place. So, what you're saying is music to our ears, because that's exactly what we need. We need community support so that we can become a stronger voice for seeking sanity and reasonable solutions out of Trenton to help address some of the issues that we're talking about tonight.
I think that the numbers and people and involvement is a really big thing, so maybe, tonight, somebody can start a list and make it easier for us to be engaged, so that we can just write down our contact information, and as you find it necessary to, that we can help you, then you can let us know.
I think of two things. One, tonight, if you can see one of Mr. Sanisak's staff members and leave him your contact information, anyone in the crowd that would be interested in participating and attending advocacy meetings and being one of the people that we work with collaboratively, fine. I think that's something Mr. Bonjibani, you would love to stay with community interaction as well.
And the thing is, we love to share that information, because the fact is that while we can do a resolution, or we can say, "On behalf of the district," it certainly carries a lot, look, legislators want to be elected. So the last thing they'd want is you sign up their phones or writing the letters to them personally saying, "Here's my situation, what can you do about it?" So, yes, there's strength in some coming from the board, but trust me, there's more spent when 100 people write a letter saying, "What can you do for us?"
That's exactly our proposal, is that there's strength in numbers, so if we get, like I said, for every person that's sitting here tonight, I'm sure there are 10 others that would be very willing to show up in, you know, in force to get a point across.
I think we're going to need a big couple of legal matters.
Mr. Isola had a suggestion. Go ahead.
So, Brian, I'd be happy, and I'm sure board members from advocacy as well as community interaction, we can even come out to De Caster, do an advocacy meeting there, do some education to see what it feels like. So, if the community can understand what we're up against, that we're not, you know, this big bad demon, we're actually wonderful people that care greatly about our citizens, specifically our students, obviously, but I think if we can build some knowledge base about some of the hurdles that we're dealing with, it may build a really strong partnership. And we can try to fight this on two fronts. We'll continue to try to be fiscally responsible, and we'll try to get the right support from our partners in Trenton, and I think that'll be good. So, if you want to be the point person, Mr. Sanisak will hook up with you, or get a date, I believe we'll bring out some digital tools where we can get everyone's email and make a list serve for us. We can do plenty, and this superintendent under the charge of its board is extremely willing to do that.
Good evening. I'm Jerry Barron, 37th and Alway. Welcome. Address, whatever. I'm on many boards and committees in towns, and one of them is the Green Team, and we've advocated for years to try and get the Board of Ed to go along with us and work with Sustainable Jersey. We certainly, you have to get certified with Sustainable Jersey first, but then you can apply for grants. And certainly grant money, certainly would save some money eventually on projects or something like that. Sustainable Jersey gives thousands of dollars every year away schools. But first, you have to be certified. You're registered, we got you registered two years ago, and no one's ever done anything about it. We've invited school administrators, and they never come to our meetings and different things like that, so I'm just...
If I may, although we may not come to meetings, I see Ms. Kealan earlier, she's already got two grants from Sustainable Jersey for the Memorial School. I don't see Mr. Bora this evening, I see the Ranetown School. Right, it has to be by school, and there is a lot of buy-in, and in fact, it's a portion of our ESIP program that we're going through right now. We are very involved with it, although your meeting times conflict with when we have babies in the building, so sometimes it's tough.
Yeah, night, every last Tuesday.
The last two notices I got were for daytime meetings from the...
No, we're also with the day.
Okay. But we are involved, we are aware of Sustainable Jersey, great program, and we are...
Not fully certified.
We are building, we're working on it. We got to get all our points.
Can I say, sir?
Mr. Miller and I attended a seminar.
Well, I would, I think, as, I think a lot of us have formed our operations committee. Can I, as extended invitation, do you come to our next operations meeting and, you know, speak with our committee a little further?
I like your extended invitation for someone to come to our meeting on Tuesday night.
Absolutely, if schedules allow, I'm sure...
You might, I might get volunteers from the Board of Ed, not just the board, I mean, school teachers, principals, I don't care, come to our meetings. Let's get them involved.
I believe Ms. Kealan will be there. She's our principal of the... Am I right, Officer?
Yes, I'll go. I'll be happy to go.
All right, there you go.
I'm just pleased to tonight, ain't I? Come on.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Miller.
I would be interested in attending that meeting too, as well.
The last three to you every month.
I just wanted to...
It's a day and reward, okay?
Thank you for your comments, sir. Thank you for your comments, sir. I'm very interested and very passionate about green technology, everything. That's one of my focuses at the operations committee meeting, so I do extend that invitation as the committee chair. I would love to have you come to one of our meetings, and I would be interested in coming to yours.
How about the committee chair?
I'm just letting you know.
And by the way, one of the innovations that we're rolling out is a reduction of paper. I know we had a very extensive discussion, we're moving towards a digital format, and most of our board members now are receiving a lot of our information digitally as opposed to paper, and we're working as a district to achieve as much of... to paper, and we're working as a district to achieve as much of a reduction in our footprint, so to speak, as possible. So, I applaud the operations committee and Ms. Mall's leadership on that, and our administrators. So, thank you. We're in the right direction, we have a lot more work to do, I agree with you, but it's, it's going in the right direction. Okay, thank you. Any further comments from the public? Seeing none, thank you very much for your comments, everyone, and I do hope that, as the woman who spoke earlier talks about, a lot of you give us your contact information, allow us to work with you, and recruit you to help us in terms of our advocacy for you. So, please see Ms. George and Mr. Sanzak as you leave, if you'd like to be contacted. And also, remember that we do publish all of our public meetings, both the advocacy, our community interaction, finance, operations, policy, are all public meetings, you're welcome to attend, and they are published on our website. And Mr. Isola?
Yeah, just, I, just be patient with us before you, I was missing some, candidate, third question, we're gonna, we're gonna field it up.
Well, absolutely.
That's okay, if you so. Rondo writes to me, concerned about the, the development that's, the cohort development that's actually reported on, and how we are prepared to handle an influx of families should the development be approved, among the family dwellings and such. The reality is, our school district, through our reconfiguration work, which many of you were impacted by, it was really for the folks that are currently with students in the school system, really aligned our schools in a manner that we have the ability to grow within it. And when we went through that process, it was a very contested and debated topic. The thing we tried to accomplish was sustainability for a decade, so that families wouldn't have to be bounced around from this area to Adelton, next area to Adelton, and vice versa throughout the community. Being a large town, sixty-something square miles, it gets complex having to move kids around the town. So, we had, through that process, developed opportunities to receive students throughout our school district in each of the buildings. So, we're prepared to do that. The bigger question will come, will the funding follow those families? Again, that will tackle, perhaps when we get out to a question and have a meeting, we can talk about those things in greater detail. We won't know if there's a new funding formula in place until a little early this June, and then after that, it'll be the next group. Yes, bud?
Chor has now returned over to the Supreme Court. No longer to, we don't know or anything else, because I understand, the law of the law, he stopped the cohort. Well, the Supreme Court, I am, all the cohort is now in the Supreme Court's hands. Every single township in the state of New Jersey must now need cohort regulation. How township is now in the third session, and the employers, the township, and the cohort engineers are working very hard to put the developments, the builder's act in the coming hour, was very seriously, if you don't go to court, if you don't follow cohort regulations, and if you decide not to do this, you're hoping to the builder's revenue.
Yes, ma'am.
Builders' revenue, they're coming to put right down power, anywhere they want, you don't have a work set. So, all the builders are effectively coming to house, self-development, and they're strategically replacing any of these developments, playing them through a crowd, house, in different sections.
Yes, ma'am.
Some will be secret, some will be public family, some will be in the public, but the others, the Supreme Court, we don't have a license.
But as Mr. Isola pointed out, the good news is that because of our work through reconfiguration, we now have the flexibility and capacity to handle a significant increase in the number of our students across our district, so that issue is not a concern as far as at least providing capacity and ability to sort.
Correct. Obviously, the funding could be. The other issue to remember is, you know, it's probably because of the court and the legal process, it's probably two years before a shovel goes in the gravel. You know, so this is a, but this is the foresight and the forward planning that this board has adopted over the years that could help them be best prepared.
And we'll stay on top of that issue, thank you.
Yes.
Is the cohort being at house, at the Supreme Court?
Yes.
Basically, at seven, is the next special meeting on affordable housing for how township, I suggest there will be a lot of talk. Thank you very much.
Just quickly, it was also on the advocacy committee's agenda this week, and we discussed it at length, and our partners at the township provided us with a lot of information. We are keeping abreast of it, and we are watching.
One other thing, I just want to remind everybody, all too frequently, whether it's at meetings last night or other places, you know, the way information is given out, by the time it, it's the old telephone, you know? By the time it gets to the second or third person, things have changed, so I would encourage you to remember two things. One, Mr. Sanzak's presentation will be on our website within a few days, so look for that, but certainly, much more importantly, is the explanation of what that means, not just looking at the slides. Our meetings are recorded and will be on Channel seventy-seven on the local TV within a few weeks, so again, you know, keep, keep an eye out for that, so that, you know, when you're talking to Betty and Suzie and Tommy and Joe, you can say, "Look, I may not be able to explain as well as Mr. Sanzak did, why don't you turn in and watch it on the, on the meeting at least?" You know, we appreciate those of you who came out, some people can't get out yet, but at least get to hear from the worst of nothing and how the numbers really play out. Again, can't thank you enough for being here tonight, though.
Yeah, thank you, very good for attending. Mr. Sanzak, does that conclude?
That will conclude the public hearing. The public hearing is closed, I believe, Mr. Miller.
At this time, I move six thousand dash one in our agenda to be voted on by the board.
Okay, we have motion six thousand dash one on the table.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Bonjivani.
Yes.
The intent is to vote on that separately?
Yes.
Good. All right, Mr. Sanzak?
Six thousand dash one, the budget, Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Bonjivani?
Yes.
Mrs. Pampa?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Mrs. Gettner?
Everyone's on the line.
I'm sorry, oh, thank you. I'm sorry, it's a little noisy, Mrs. Mall?
Yeah.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
The budget, six thousand dash one, he's approved, eight votes in favor, not opposed. At this time, the board is in need of an executive session.
Need a motion going through the adjournments? Seconded by Mr. Moretti.
Please notice the exec, notice the executive session motion from the agenda, the unimmeasurably will be pushed out in the hit group court. Thank you, the board is in executive session. The board has made their way to the desk, the board is back in session. Shall we take the approval of the minutes, sir?
Please.
Move it?
Move it.
Next.
Seconded by Ms. Mall.
Moved by Mr. Moretti, go next.
Yeah, Ms. Sanzak.
Shall I take them around, sir?
Please do.
On the minutes, Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mrs. Mall?
I must have saved.
Mrs. Pampa?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Mrs. Mangana?
I understand.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Bonjivani?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
The minutes are approved, six notes in favor, the extensions noted for the record. Correspondence the board has received will be noted for the record. It is now time for the board president's comments. President of the board, Mr. Timothy O'Brien, your comments, sir?
Again? All right, sorry, a little later, guys, it's been late. But, no, again, thank you, just included our budget hearing, and one of the, one of the best aspects of that was that you interact with our community at a level that we all wanted. I think it is the foundation for something very, very powerful going forward, and I commend both this board and administration for the type of presentation that encourages the support from the community, the fact that they are interested in engaging with us where we need to engage in terms of advocacy at the level where it will make a difference in Trenton. So, Mr. Moretti, you have a great charge ahead of you, and I hope that you can take advantage of the enthusiasm and, you know, willingness to get involved. Mr. Bonjivani, you as well, this could be a great opportunity for us to springboard going forward in terms of our community interaction, and allow us to be a stronger voice for our community where it matters most. So, thank you, and again, I will turn it over to our superintendent for his report.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. So, this evening, I'd like to share a couple items with the board and the community that happened since we last met. As you are aware, I have now updated you about the progress towards our district goals. That information is available through SharePoint, as well as the school board's website. As we discussed in the areas of student achievement, climate, culture, technology, and community interaction, were the focus areas, and that information, as we discussed, is available for your review, and I am proud to tell you that this district as a whole, under the direction of this board, has worked diligently to achieving those goals, and I think you'll be rather pleased with your review, and certainly hope that you will be. Since we last met on April twenty-sixth, we celebrated Administrative Professional Assistant Day, formerly known as Secretary Day, and that was celebrated throughout our district, and we are such a fine staff of individuals that support us in making our work accomplished, quite frankly, and, you know, certainly-
They let us, they let us out.
That's it, and Teresa's here this evening with us, so certainly, Teresa, on behalf of all the assistants throughout our district, I'm sure that Mr. O'Brien will join me in telling you thank you for what he's doing every day. Student Government Day, as you heard from Ms. Pixl, was last night, and as you all know, it was, and I know that Mr. Miller and Mr. Moretti were present, were in attendance. I had the opportunity to get over there during the school day with Mr. Sanzak, and back at night, to get to perform as the council. It was really, you know, it was really great, you know? One of the county representatives during the day said, "Besides, it's, you know, it's a day out of school." No, it's not, and I'm not upset with that, I get why the individual said that. We just took the learning somewhere else, right? It was a really fabulous learning experience for our children, and certainly, it really, they, they were really awesome last night. I'm sure, I mean, Mr. Miller and Mr. Moretti have the opportunity to give their updates, you'll hear something from them, we know they were very proud there last night. We are, we are going on May eighth to the Future Red New Jersey Certification Summit, that's something we've been working diligently on, becoming a recognized Future Red School District. Mr. Miller will be joining the team that's going up to Newark, to NJIT, and it should be a really good day, and that's where they're gonna, the state will release the criteria to the individual districts that are looking to gain that certification. As I've shared with you before, we've had members of our team and teaching staff on various task force, and it's been a very long but rewarding process so far, so we're excited to see what the future has. In fact, I think there's a discussion item coming out on that when we have that opportunity in just a few minutes. Want to remind the board that on May ninth, we will be having our classroom close-up being filmed at Memorial Elementary School. That is a, through NJTV, is a program where they highlight successful models for, that's happening throughout the state in education, and Memorial with its, with its STEM lab, as well as, I believe, the garden and some of the grants that they've accomplished there will be one of the featured programs in coming weeks. So, we'll keep you updated on that, but just so the boards are aware, there will be media folks in the district on May ninth. The district, so this is good, so Teacher Appreciation Day is May ninth, it's next week, but there's a little confusion in some, and whatever, doesn't matter, we appreciate teachers all the time, but our district will, I want the board to know this, will be formally recognizing Teacher Appreciation Day on the ninth. It is normally the first full week of May-
Yeah.
And, but that counts, Sunday starts the week, so on the, on the national calendar, it's recognized as the ninth. You may have seen, because I know many of you follow us on Twitter, and follow the schools, there's been some PTAs in schools recognizing staff this week, that's awesome, congrats, it's always good to just sprinkle that longer, it's beautiful. But I wanted the board to know that that's coming up, and if you've seen anything, and you haven't seen anything directly from me, that's because we'll be giving it on the ninth. And I'm very excited about recognizing the fine teachers and appreciating folks that, you know, make our school district what it is, so, so that's upcoming. The following day is May tenth, and that's Nurses Appreciation Day. You know, and I looked up, because we have a calendar, and I didn't see Superintendent Appreciation Day. I don't know, it's about the only day we say the appreciation for a dog named Jimmy.
Submit that to the advocacy committee.
Absolutely. But, but we have, we do have the opportunity to recognize the fabulous nurses that serve our students and our staff throughout this district, and that's on the tenth, so that's upcoming events. Let's see, we have three teams that will be competing at the STEM Tank, Central Regional K-A competition. You are able to register to go, to go see that, that will be down in Trenton. I have a county meeting about Q-SAC, so I will not be attendance, Ms. Annual will be there as a director. I'm sorry?
May eleventh.
That's May twelfth, and if anyone would like to attend, you can certainly register, I believe it's still open, I don't know if it's limited capacity there, but we have three teams competing, and that is an awesome accomplishment. There are many schools that compete at the local level, only a handful of teams will be competing down there, and for one school district that has three teams down there, it's quite an accomplishment, something we should be proud of. So, if anyone is interested, see Teresa, we can try to get her registered tomorrow. I think Mr. Miller is registered, am I right?
No.
Oh, okay, okay, so, I apologize. The RIS Educated is quickly approaching from the foundation, that is on the thirteenth of May, and that will be regular, starting in Go School North. I would encourage all of our community to certainly come out and run, walk, or just help out. It's a really fun day, it's quick, for some, it's a little longer, but it's, it's certainly a great day, and it is the primary source of grant-raising funds for the foundation that come directly back to our students and staff, so that is on Saturday, May thirteenth. As you know, we are participating in Pink Town Pink, as you can see behind the day, so our banner is hanging. It is a recognized program that takes place through the month of May throughout our community. Our school board and school district are certainly participating. At our May twenty-fourth meeting, which is also our student board day, that will be our Pink Town Pink. Pink out there will encourage all the kids in school and staff to wear pink in recognition of breast cancer wears, and encourage individuals to go for the proper testing to hopefully avoid, you know, unfortunate news. So, at our meeting on the twentieth, I'd like to encourage you all to join me in wearing pink at the day, so that we can be in a unified front for this important parade. As I mentioned, that's also going to be our student board day, and I am meeting, I think, Thursday or Friday, Mr. Bonjivani, tomorrow, when Mr. Bonjivani and Mr. Hargreaves finalize the, the program, the kids have been selected, they've been appointed as, you know, Chair of Operations, Chair of this, a member on this committee, a member on that committee, so we'll go through that and get that organized. One of the things we're gonna have to do is mock up some agendas for the committee meetings that will take place during the day, so the students have some direction. We'll look at that, we may ask for the actual chairs of those committees to weigh in digitally, and then via email, and we'll make that a very meaningful day. And then, as you know, that evening, the students will sit in your seats and our seats, and actually conduct the mini board meeting, should be earlier, much like Student Government Day, quite frankly, I think that was Ms. Mall's suggestion, a couple meetings back, and I'm really glad to see that we got that up and running so quickly, and thanks for your support in making that happen.
So, on the twenty-fourth, will we start in the morning?
Yeah, I believe we're gonna open at six with the mock board, with the student board. We also will be having an extensive student recognition evening, so wear comfortable shoes or whatever you have to do. The following board meeting is June twenty-eighth, post-graduation. The following board meeting is June 28th, post-graduation. So all of our recognitions will have to happen next month, or a special before that for student recognition, because once the students get dismissed, they're off with baseball and vacation, and soccer, and dance, and all the things that the students are doing in the summer, it's difficult to be able to get them in. The one thing we're going to have to look at is the end of, we now recognize the sport seasons, so it's currently the spring season. I'd like to be able to see if that includes prior to the 24th. If not, we may have to decide to do that on the 28th, or our first meeting is September, which would probably be logical. So it could be difficult, I guess, in the day periods, but we'll work through that logistical issue, and next year we'll be sure to book a board meeting prior to the close of school in June, so.
Let us know what you need, Mr. Pixl.
Yep.
At the end of the day, it's better if we can get it done during the school year, especially for our eighth year, so I, do we have a consensus, the board members, the board, very flexible in support of that? Okay, so use your judgment, let us know what you need.
Much appreciated, sir. And then my final item on my report for this meeting would be the, excuse me, the report of actual suspensions. That report is coming around for your review, and for this reporting period, there were 14 of such suspensions. And thank you for your patience and attention during the report, and that concludes the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Isola, Mr. Sannasak.
Yes, and now time for committee briefs and liaison reports, Mr. O'Brien.
Okay. I will start on my left. Mr. Pompo, anything for policy?
Policy committee is not yet, so I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Murray?
The safety committee met on April 26th. Mr. Alvin was there showing the training with the schools, and currently being done under the status of going well. We are continuing to practice updating and going through all the new procedures. Mr. Sannasak, Mr. Alvin discussed the bomb threat training, class that they attended, and shared the information they learned from the class. What has happened now is a new procedure that they're looking at. Instead of evacuating the schools, they're looking to have the students stay in their location, because that's what happens in most schools, that their structure is really strong, and the bombs that have been used are not that strong, and as few take the children and removing them from that location to get out of the building, a bomb in a hallway would do more damage than the bomb getting, than the bomb, people hunkering down and being protected by that concrete wall. So that's what they're looking at right now. Is that correct, Mr. Pompo?
I think, yes, it is correct. It's just pending the professionals to interpret whether it's credible or not. So it's, instead of the automatic evacuation for one word written on the bathroom wall, it's to work with our partners at the police department, and we've been doing this for years. We actually were proud to hear them saying to all the districts, basically, what we have pioneered, and it is to work with our partners in law enforcement that are trained in that, to evaluate and assess the threat, and only evacuate if there is a credible threat with reasonable parameters. So it is the way that we have worked with our law enforcement for a while, but it was good training for Mr. O'Brien in that.
We're also continuing to upgrade our buildings, such as stair chairs. We're adding into a couple of buildings exterior cameras, exterior PA system, and strobes. Looking into upgrading the interior doors and locking mechanisms. That's an ongoing procedure right now. And we're also always discussing the SRO's training. That's where we're still here on that.
Yes, but Mr. Alvin attended the state training for SRO liaison, and we are looking forward to the negotiations that will come in the near future based on Mr. Isola's direction.
That's the report. The minutes for that for December 6th were approved. The advocacy committee, we had met, and the items we discussed pretty much was the thing of affordable housing.
Yes.
Ron had gotten a complete layout of all the construction that's possibly going to be happening, and we were discussing that.
We discussed some of those funding formulas that are out there that really don't, aren't our actual proposals yet, but their political statements have been made about what they'd like to see. There's pretty basic parameters, we discussed those. We discussed the SRO 3 bill and the affordable housing.
And on that affordable housing, we were discussing, as Mr. Isola had mentioned earlier, that it's just two to three years in the future, so we have to see, we have to see how this progresses.
We also discussed briefly the cameras on the school buses.
Yes, oh, yes, sorry about that, yes.
And we'll continue that conversation in terms of whether, as a district, we will present that with our own resolution as opposed to kicking in on the organization that seems to be doing it. There were some questions about that organization.
Right. The, there is a bill going through that is well-supported by most bus drivers to allow the video to be the witness in court, if you will. I spoke to Assemblyman Rival about it, and unfortunately, it's being pushed by a company that is related to the red light camera bounty hunter style, and it is giving the legislators some pause, but it's still a good bill to get behind, and we did talk about that. And then there's also a bill pending on changing the parameters for a student left on the bus. The nice part about that, or the win-win part of the camera part, is that it is also part of our ESIP to save fuel. The same system that will video the person going through the bus's red light and stop sign is also the system that will allow us to better round our buses and have a behavior modification on bike driving habits, which will save fuel and pay for itself. So that's something that's part of our ESIP, ties together with other safety and advocacy points. So that was good. Thank you.
I commend the safety committee and the advocacy committee for their work, and I'm looking forward to seeing a lot more, especially on advocacy. But it's important, safety is one of the critical objectives we try to achieve every day, and I think it's also, when we set up our Position of Security Director years ago, we had no idea how it evolved, but it's become a very useful and extremely important part of our efforts, right?
We use him well.
Okay, there you go, good. No, that's terrific. And again, I agree with your comments on our tremendous relationship with our police department. We're very fortunate to have that partnership that's existed for many, many years, and it's only gotten stronger over the years. So as far as the SRO, shared service agreement that we're currently negotiating, do we have a timetable on the Monday that might be brought back to the board for action?
At this point, we're waiting for the agreement draft and the send to the municipal partners to be returned with any kind of amendments or concerns that they may have, and then we'll come to a consensus that this is the memorandum that we want to bring to both the governing bodies. So I anticipate getting something from, I think they've had it for a number of weeks now, so hopefully ensuring that the budget cycle went through, and they have now struck a budget, so really, we're waiting for a response. I'll certainly check with town adjutant tomorrow morning.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, very good. Any further questions on that? Same one?
Community Interaction is not yet since our last meeting. Next meeting is scheduled for May 16th, at which time we will continue our ongoing discussion about community outreach, different ways of reaching out to them. In our last board meeting, we also approved a resolution recognizing Kevin Sayak for having become the president of National. I had hoped that maybe we could go to Sagerville's board meetings, presented at one of their meetings in front of his colleagues. Turns out it's the same night as Community Interaction, so two options. One is if somebody else from this board wanted to go to that meeting and present it to him there, that would be quite nice. If not, I'm definitely seeing him at the Board of Directors meeting for NJSBA, and I can present it to him there on behalf of the board, so that's a conversation you and I can have offline, or if anybody wants to make point of stepping up and wanting to do that.
Could we make an exception, reschedule if Community Interaction means a lot of participation? I mean, I think it's really important that you go, and so I would think it would make sense to reschedule Community Interaction just one time only.
Yeah, I mean, we don't need, certainly the other members of the board who are on that are more than capable, more than capable of carrying on with that meeting for now.
Yeah, we'll be up tomorrow, sir.
Bun Bunny. For the student government, so why don't we look at our agenda and see if it's something that we can push back or go forward, and then we'll put back to the board on that.
Right, sure. And Mr. Miller had asked me, he is unavailable to attend the next delegate assembly. I will be attending on his behalf. Before that, I will make sure that if there's any business that will require voting to pass it out and discuss it with the board, so that I'm reflecting not just my opinion, but the board's, thank you, decision.
Yes. Question, what time is the delegate assembly?
Delegate Assembly usually is breakfast at 8:00 or 8:30. Meeting's starting at 9:00, and how long it goes depends on the amount of business and how well it is run. This one will have an additional time built into it because it will be the nomination committee for NJSBA to put forward their nominations for the officers for the next two years for school boards, so there will be voting on that. Since they're running unopposed, nothing can come from the floor by delegate rules. That shouldn't take a lot of time, but I'm sure that these speeches and...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Mr. Miller, you've been busy lately, but now that you got the position for the board...
I do want to thank my finance committee for all the nights they came out working on the budget. Mr. Sannasak and your staff, administration, our partners with the HDEA, their representative that came out to all the meetings. I want to thank them all for all that they put into the budget, and of course, all of you this evening for standing behind the finance committee and approving the budget going forward. As Mr. Isola said, yesterday I had the opportunity to spend the day with the seventh graders for Student Government Day. They were so excited when they came, they got to hear from the municipal partners, the county partners, and apart from that, they, some of them were actually at the state house to hear from our state partners. So it was, they did a great job. I had an opportunity at the end to speak to each of them, to find out what they actually learned, and what their favorite part of the day was. So I was really excited, I even got to see a demonstration where Officer Nubari was a carjacker and was arrested. So the students really enjoyed that, and then I returned at night to see them work. They really took it serious. Every one of them really didn't think of it as a day off of school. They really asked great questions, they wanted to quiz them what the governments do, so it was really a great day for them. And I want to thank the teachers that were with them. It was just, it was a great day, and I was glad I had the opportunity to spend it with them. Police partners did a great, like I said, demonstration with the bomb dogs, and drug dogs, and carjacking. It was really great. That's all I see.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Yeah, I'm at the end of the evening session, and I was really impressed by our people, especially our mayor. She handled herself like a real leader. She took control of it. Someone came up with some suggestion of doing something, and she took that, you know, take that under consideration. Thank you very much for your time. She just handled it really, like she was really in charge. And our other students that were in the council's position, they really, they came up with some good essays on why they should be there. They really did, they're very impressed, very impressed.
I have heard such good things about it, I wish I could have been there, but I do plan to respond to the emails that I receive within the next 24 hours on behalf of the board. I will make sure that I do so. If they're out there watching, then they can see it, but by the time they see this, I will respond. So I was, I have to agree, everything I heard about it was a terrific event, and our students put themselves exceptionally well, which is no surprise.
I only, just for the record, so that it's clear, I voted the young man's email to you, the Vice President and the Chair of Finance, so if it's your pleasure, I can turn it and distribute it to the whole board.
Please. I really, if you don't like it, I don't want to respond, I can respond back if you want to do it.
As is your pleasure.
Yes, and again, my earliest opportunity, I plan to do so, but for reply back to me over the next 12 hours. I'm trying to be able to sleep, so I'll make sure I do a good job. Okay, thank you. And thank you both for attending the event. I know it's difficult sometimes for all of us to get out to these events, but I'm really impressed with the fact that so many of our board members do make an effort to include in their schedules every opportunity they can to interact with our students as they shine. So again, thank you. Ms. Maddow?
Operation has not met since our last meeting, but we will be meeting very soon.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, again, that concludes our committee, and...
Mr. O'Brien? Yes? Dr. Lowe's absence.
Oh, no, you're actually right, sir.
Certification, there's no actual required, so if you would prefer to table it, or I'm sure Mr. President...
I'd prefer to have our esteemed Chair deliver the report, if that's all right. Is that a pleasure, Board, in retaining the education report?
There are no actionable items coming out of it.
But I appreciate bringing it to my attention, and I apologize again, you don't want to get short-stripped, so that can... So that being said, we'll table the report on education until our chair is back in the sitting next meeting. Okay, very good. That concludes the...
Thank you. It's now time for the first public comment. Please note the motion, credit the agenda of the board that recognizes the public comments in the last 45 minutes, and will be conducted according to the following. Officer, we respect the time and decor, Mr. President, for Mr. Timothy O'Brien. Are there any comments at this time?
Seeing no comments, we're going to... All right, very good. Thank you. The floor is closed.
Floor is closed. We have a little more discussion here, Mr. Miller?
Yes.
What time of discussion?
As you heard, I was the board representative to the Future Ready School Committee that will be meeting on May 8th to start the process of certification. Part of that process to get certification is that the board needs to adopt a resolution, which I'm going to read into the record. It's the Future Ready Schools Resolution, where the Haltownship Board of Education proceeds to support the identification of a future-ready school, New Jersey District Team Lead, and creating a team of FRS NJ specialists that infuse digital learning across multiple disciplines, including math, technology, media, art, science, language arts, and career and technical education. Whereas the Haltownship Board of Education will support and promote the development of individual school future-ready teams that infuse digital learning across multiple disciplines, including math, technology, education, media, arts, science, language arts, and career and technical education. Therefore, it is resolved that the Haltownship Board of Education agrees to participate in the Future Ready Schools majority. We hereby appoint Claire Engel to be the district liaison to the Future Ready Schools New Jersey, who will report to the board upon completion of tasks for the certification program. We do hereby recognize that Claire Engel will be the responsible agent at the district level to carry out the district's commitment for its schools to participate in Future Ready Schools New Jersey. We agree to follow through with the district's commitment and support our schools achieve certification through the Future Ready Schools New Jersey Certification Program, and it will be signed by Timothy O'Brien, Board Education President, Joseph Jaya, as also District Superintendent, Ronald Sannasak, Assistant Superintendent, Business Administration and Board Secretary. So it is my recommendation that the board approve this resolution to allow us to start the process of becoming future-ready.
I believe I have a motion to adopt the resolution as stated by Mr. Miller. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Murray, I have the motion, it's on the table. Any discussion?
Excellent, so we're starting to agree. Maybe...
Yeah, I, well...
That is 8/4 to the agenda, and we will vote it? That's our next order of business?
Absolutely, and just like to insert a small comment myself, seeing no discussion, but I'm very... but I'm very pleased and proud to be able to put my signature on this resolution. Claire Engel has been a tremendous asset for our district. I assume she's been approached and said she's willing to take on the responsibility and will ensure to put herself exceptionally well. I know we've had the opportunity to talk about future ready as part of our focus discussion. It's led to some interesting dialogue about it. But yeah, no, I think this is terrific. Thank you, Mr. Miller, for bringing it to the board. We have a motion on the table now. Do we have consent? Consent is on board to adopt?
Yep.
Very good. We'll put it on as agenda item. What'd you say it was?
A4.
A4. Terrific. Very good. After we vote, it'll slide.
Okay, it is now time for the consent agenda.
I apologize. There was late break in the news, step two, not a major issue, but ABA Day is coming up. I want to say May 12th. I apologize. I can be wrong. Is it May 12th? Historically, representatives from the town come out and do a brief presentation in a sapping or planning with students. There, the town, the JCP Commission asked if there would like to be any board participation in that program. So we'll poll you. We can just see Teresa that you're willing to do that. We'll get you the details and the contact and suit hand if not for Mr. Preston's office. He's the point person experienced that. So if you're willing and available, we'll get you the information, and that will help so that there's a representation at each of the buildings that the program goes to. It's a really nice program.
Just a few minutes ago, I received a call from a friend who's on the JCP Commission, and actually called about ABA Day. So, you know, I can make that connection with him because he had asked specifically about this.
I think it's a great idea. I know we've had board members attend the past.
So what we could do rather than, I'll just have this cannot, or Trudy from Iowa goes to Trudy to just email directly, and there'll be a direct correspondence that way. Does that work for you? So we should expect the email then to mark on that.
Thank you. All right.
Okay, now it's time for the consent agenda and the agenda.
Please.
I would like to read in A3. Will be superintendent calls approved the completion of superintendent miracles, qualitative one, qualitative two, and quantitative three. Reading into 4,000-1, appoint Karen Anderson, C-A-R-Y-N, common spelling of Anderson, for the Comp 12 Assistant Board Secretary, a salary of $85,000, effective July 3rd or sooner, and the salary will be prorated. Can I move over a second? I'm sorry, any questions?
I have a question.
Moved by Ms. Mallon, seconded by...
Mr. Miller.
Mr. Miller, may I take around the consent agenda and attend to sir?
Please.
Ms. Mallon?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Pompo?
Yes.
Mr. Gurn?
Mr. Sansec, I'm just curious again, I just...
You would be, I'm sorry, in fact, the three members that exited executive will be standing on A3.
Magnify it. So it's...
Yes, on everything except for sentencing on A3.
Thank you. Mrs. Mayor Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes, but all are standing on A3.
Thank you. Mr. Bonjavani?
Yes, but recusing myself on A3.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
The consent agenda and the agenda are approved. Eight votes in favor, none opposed, with the three extensions on A3 noted for the record. It's now time for our second public comment. The motion reading is the same. Are there any comments at this time?
Seeing none, and the four people close.
One further...
Did I go too fast?
No, it's... One further thing for the agenda?
You are adjourned.
Thank you all.